Okay, good evening. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to welcome Pastor Jason Howard from Strawn Creek Church to lead us in an invocation. Pastor Howard here? He's not here. Would anyone else want to, like to lead us in invocation?
I'll do it.
All right. Go ahead, Matt. We're gonna open up to the audience.
Do you want to go down there and do it?
No, you can do it. We've done it. Mel and I've done it up there before.
All right. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the chance to come here before you as a council and as citizens of the city of Milton, and we ask that you grant all of us in this room your wisdom, your grace, as we make decisions with regards to all of us within our borders and for the relationships with those around us, we ask that you bless us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Matt. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, February 3rd, 2014, to order. The city clerk slash city manager will please call the roll and make general announcements.
I will. Good evening, Mayor and council. Be happy to call roll for the January 3rd, 2014, regular meeting. I'd like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting would like to provide public comment either during the public hearings or during the call for public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There's no public comment for consent agenda items or items on the first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you would expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coons.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Usk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Jolong Goria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morag.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the pleasure of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody here tonight to our council meeting. We appreciate you being here. If our clerk slash city manager will sound the first item on the agenda.
First item is approval of the meeting agenda. It's agenda item number 14029. Staff's only recommended modifications to add an executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel.
Discussing what?
Personnel.
Personnel. Okay. I'd also like to add an item to, add a proclamation.
Okay.
All right. Is there anything else?
A proclamation.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, do we have any public comment tonight?
I have received no comments.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and read the public comment notes. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There is no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward, speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. I'll open up. Do we have public comment?
We do. We have Abby Labota.
Okay.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name's Abby Labota, 13825 Brittle Road, Milton. I am in partnership with Laura Venture for Preserve Royal Milton, and I wanted to let you know some feedback that we've gotten from the community. We've worked really, really hard, as I'm sure you all probably know and have heard about. You've seen the signs, you've seen our magnets, and if you have been on our website, you've seen an overwhelming response from the community about our efforts. Just to give you some numbers, we set up a website, what, three weeks ago? Is that right? And we have over 991, is that right?
It's about over a thousand, I think, unique visitors.
Yeah, unique visitors on a daily basis. Daily, okay? It's not weekly, this is daily. This is just in the last three weeks. Then we started a Facebook page. We've had, in three days, we've had over 521 likes, we've had 991 views, and as of today, we've had over a thousand signatures on the petition that you all are aware of. We decided to gain momentum for effort for conservation of Royal Milton by creating signs and yard magnets, and just two weeks, I've delivered over 190 yard signs, I've knocked on 190 doors, and we have sold just under 400 car magnets. The response from the community is overwhelming. I think they like you again. There is a big divide, as you well know, from the last four or five years, from all the controversy that we've had. I've made a great stride and I think great effort in trying to talk with everybody door by door, literally, door by door. They're asking if you're listening to us. I say, yes, you're listening to us, that we're working together. Do you agree with us? Yes, you agree with our initiatives. Is there any problems? No, no problems, no issues, we're working together. So, I'm trying very hard to bridge the gap between the community and what Laura is working with you on, with the different initiatives. I'm getting handwritten notes and verbal thank yous for our work. I've come across people who are angry, they have shouted at me because they're mad at you, not me, but because they're mad at you. They're disappointed, they're tearful, they're distrustful of the city, and many people have just given up to complacency and are welcoming a new effort. Let's see, what else can I tell you? One of the two big things that have come up in all the conversations with everybody is I'm trying to educate them on what a green print is, that is the very first step to defining what steps we need to take moving forward. Those folks who have a slight understanding of what that is are in agreement with that and are looking for you all to do something about that. The other big bit of feedback I'm getting is clear cutting. People are really, really upset about the clear cutting, they don't understand the building business, they don't understand the development business, they don't understand the numbers that go along with it. I try to explain to them that it's the easiest and most effective, cost-efficient way for them to do their business. They don't care, obviously. I don't care. They don't want to see the trees clear cut. So, I'm asking you if there's anything that we can do about that. I don't know what that means, I don't know what that looks like, I don't know where we go from here, but the community, I'm asking you all, if we can stop clear cutting, maybe the city of Milton can be one of the first to start that effort. I know that clear cutting is completely legal in forest practices within Georgia. The developers and builders have taken that because it's easier for them to build, you know, and I get that, I understand that, but there's consequences to all of that. So, I've told them that I would ask you if we can put some motions in place where we can ban clear cutting within the city of Milton. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
Public comment. Thank you. Thank you very much. And again, as public comment's not a time to talk back and forth, I do want to thank the efforts of Preserve Milton, and our staff does have several, in fact, has had and does have several meetings scheduled in the next couple of weeks on this matter, so we're definitely working forward on that. Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
There is not.
Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda.
We've got one item on the consent agenda tonight. It's approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Echo Flow Incorporated for Milton's Household Paint and Chemicals Collection Event on February 22nd, 2014. It's agenda item number 14030.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as approved by staff.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous on the consent agenda. Okay. Next step added by, in our agenda, by motion second on our agenda. I am proud to have a proclamation here that goes to someone that's been with us from day one, since the city started, and even before, and has worked very hard in several different positions, but mainly since, I think, officially 2009, our city manager, and we are very proud of our city manager to be credentialed through the ICMA, International City/County Management Association. I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head, but there's only a few in Georgia that are certified, so we're definitely proud and lucky to have somebody of Chris's caliber here and the commitment that he has shown. So, to start off, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Thurman.
Yeah. Typically, a city manager first serves as an assistant city manager for a period of time and then becomes a city manager. Milton is not typical. I first met Chris when we served on the Committee for the Incorporation of the City of Milton, and he was one of our first employees of the city when he was hired as a Director of Public Safety. He oversaw the initial deployment of both our police and fire departments. When we found ourselves in a need of an interim city manager and only our second year as a city, Chris was the person chosen to help us through that difficult time, mainly because he was one of the forum employees and he had a gun. He served as our city until the city manager was hired. After a few short months, we found ourselves again in need of an interim city manager. Once again, Chris fulfilled that role. It was then that we realized that we had someone who not only understood Milton, but had, by this time, managed to get the experience he needed and on-the-job training to be our city manager. Chris has both a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice and a Master's degree in public administration. He was unanimously appointed our city manager in March 2009, and after being appointed, Chris continued to work toward expanding his knowledge and has been actively involved in the North Fulton Mayor's Association City Manager Meetings, the Georgia Municipal Association, and the International City/County Management Association. And recently, as Joe said, he received the credential manager designation from the ICMA, and it's an honor for the mayor and the city council on behalf of all the residents, the business owners, and the city staff to recognize Chris for receiving this designation, which positively impacts all of us. Proclamation recognizing Chris Lagerblum's credential manager designation from ICMA. Whereas Milton City Manager Chris Lagerblum recently received the credential manager designation from ICMA, the International City/County Management Association, and...
Whereas Lagerblum has served the city of Milton as city manager since his permanent appointment on February 2nd, 2009, and whereas previously he served on the Committee for the Incorporation of the City of Milton and has held the positions of Milton's first Director of Public Safety and served as his interim city manager.
And whereas during his time with the city of Milton, Lagerblum has overseen a Milton awarded Best Quality of Life in the state of Georgia, among numerous other honors for excellence in financial reporting and budgeting, community development, and communications. And...
Whereas he's the driving force behind the city of Milton, bringing more services in-house in a hybrid public-private partnership that became the model for cities looking for ways to cut costs and increase services. And...
Whereas Lagerblum is one of just 1,300 local government management professionals currently credentialed through the ICMA voluntary credentialing program. And...
Whereas to receive the prestigious ICMA credential, an applicant must have significant experience as a senior management executive in local government, have earned a degree, preferably in public administration or a related field, and have demonstrated a commitment to the high standards of integrity, lifelong learning, and professional development. And...
Whereas ICMA credentialed managers are viewed with growing distinction by local governing bodies and progressive civically engaged communities. And...
Whereas every day Lagerblum brings a level of expertise and commitment to the city of Milton that is simply unparalleled. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton hereby recognize Chris Lagerblum for his accomplishment, given under our hand and seal the city of Milton, Georgia, on this third day of February 2014. And I'd just like to add for Councilmember Thurman's comments about Chris filling in, and in fact, actually, I think the council actually felt sorry for him when he filled in twice and were afraid he was gonna run away, and I'll never forget when Chris came and said, "You know, I'd like to be considered for the permanent situation," or the permanent position. And one other thing that, one of the reasons that he was chosen, he was also the only one that could get along with all the council members. Quite of accomplishment right there. It serves a lot. So, anyways, we are proud to have Chris on board our team, and he's the one that makes things happen here in the city of Milton, so thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Paul snuck in.
Come on, Paul. You guys come up here for the picture. Come on, Michelle.
Where do you want us to go?
You got to be here in the book.
Okay. Maybe this is the one.
All right.
Sidney has one for each of them.
That's why I called. Get mine too.
Two seconds.
Okay.
We're all in.
Left and right.
We're fine without it.
Oh, it's better, okay.
We'll do it at the end.
You know, look at that.
Paul's like, "Oh, sorry."
Are you guys ready?
You know, welcome before I start having some refreshments and then come back in picture.
Yeah.
Funny, because I was in there doing this. Judging those things and Katie was in there and she got a copy of my business. Okay, David, are we on? David, are we on?
Yeah.
All right, if I could get everybody's attention. Can I get everybody's attention, please? So, everybody would, I'll give a last call if you grab a cookie or snack and take your seat. We'll move forward with our meeting. Okay. Tonight, there are no items on the reports and presentations. First presentation, public hearing or zoning agenda. So, we'll move to unfinished business at first, City Clerk, please call the item.
What'd you get, did you give me?
Will. Yes, the item on unfinished business is consideration of inordinance.
Excuse me, Chris. If I could have everybody in the audience be quiet.
All right, the first item is consideration of inordinance to amend the City of Milton radar permit to include the Cambridge High School Zone. It's Agenda Item Number 14-024, first presentation at January 22, 2014, regular council meeting. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, Council. This is an ordinance amendment to update our radar permit to include the Cambridge High School Zone. I do need to make one correction, it was brought to my attention that the Birmingham Falls School Zone was also included in this amendment, so this would update our overall speed table to include just those two school zones. That's it, if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for that? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 14-024.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Carter. Okay, City Clerk, please call the next item.
Will, before I do that, just as we move through the new business, I want to bring the council's attention to the fact that Item Number Three, which was a resolution speaking towards a moratorium extension, even though that's published in new business, I want to let you know we will hold a public hearing on that tonight, so if there are members of the public that want to issue or submit cards at this point for that public hearing, a couple of agenda items from now, we'll go through that process.
Okay, so we will accept public comment cards on that item?
Correct. The first item is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals for District Three Post One. It's Agenda Item Number 14-031. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Do you all believe this is your appointment?
Yeah, yeah, so Nancy Plisnarsky, who's been serving on the BZA since I took office in 2010, has agreed to serve for another term, and I believe that term is four years. Not all the positions are four-year terms, but that one is, so.
That's correct.
She's done an excellent job, I hope everybody has notes Nancy, and just would like to reappoint her.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Nancy Plisnarsky to the City of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals, District Three Post One.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. City Manager wants to read the next item, the record.
The next item is consideration of a resolution reappointing a member to the City of Milton Historic Preservation Commission for District Three Post One. It's Agenda Item Number 14-032.
Okay. Yours again, Joe.
So Travis Allen has been serving on the post since the commission was instantiated, and this particular post is a two-year term. So, just to make sure everybody understands it's not a four-year term, I talked to Travis, and he would like to continue on service to the commission, he's actually the head of the commission right now, so, or the chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Travis Allen as reappointed to the City of Milton Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, Councilmember Moreg, second, Councilmember Hewitt. For approval, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Congratulations, Travis. All right, if our, as our city manager stated, our next item, we will allow public comment if there are those that would like to comment on this. And I'll ask our city manager to read this item to the record.
The item is consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia enacting a moratorium for 180 days to bar the acceptance of applications for rezonings to the CUP-NUPT-R R2 and R2A zoning districts. It's Agenda Item Number 14-033. And let the city attorney make a presentation, we do have one person who's indicated their desire to speak.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much, I'll give the very brief presentation on this. The council may recall that on June 6 of this year, we adopted a temporary moratorium to prevent the filing of rezonings to the CUP-NUPT-R R2 and R2Z, R2A zoning classifications while we worked on the performance standards. We are continuing to do that, however, what the law anticipates is while you can adopt an emergency moratorium, you need to have a public hearing before you adopt a longer term moratorium, and that's what we've done. We have advertised this today for a public hearing, if after the public hearing is over, you are so inclined, you can adopt the resolution in your agenda book, and that will extend this moratorium for, and it's got basically three trigger points, first of all, 180 days after the adoption of this resolution, number two, to the approval by the city council of an extended moratorium, or number three, upon the adoption of amendments to the performance standards for CUP-NUPT-R R2 or R2A. So, Mr. Mayor, at this point, that is the presentation. Be appropriate now to hear if there's any public comment and what that public comment is.
Okay, I'll open up public comment.
Mr. Mayor, we have one.
Sorry.
We have one, it's Walter Recook.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, my name's Walt Recook, I live at 615 Scarlet Oak Trail. I'm not speaking for or against, I think they'll show that on the application, but the big thing that I am trying to request is if you are putting a moratorium, don't put a maximum time limit, try to put a limit whenever you feel that the project is completed and you've come up with a resolution that seems reasonable, that you at least consider that timetable, and bring it back to the council to be heard and resolved. The second thing is that if you do go through with this, then you create a committee, and have that committee assembled with people that are both within the community, environmental groups, neighborhood development people, builders, real estate agents, bankers, and have a good cross-section, because I think to really look at something, it's best to have people that can look at both sides of the project and see what could be resolved and coming up with a good product. I've served on many jurisdictions, both at the Gwinnett County Development Advisory Council, as well as the Fulton Development Advisory Council, and many times these groups would get together and discuss ordinances and how to make them better. And this is a very good way of looking at a solution and getting input immediately from those people that are most affected, and I say that on both sides of the fence, not just the folks building, but also the folks affected by the building. So, I think it's good if you did do something like that, I think it would make people feel like they're being incorporated into it, and for that matter, even have some open hearings involving that. Thank you for your help, and look forward to working with the team and come up with good resolution to this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comment?
We do not.
Okay, I'll close the hearing and open up to the council for questions to our city attorney or staff.
Yeah, sorry, I jumped the gun there, I just wanted to make sure the records showed it was January the 6th, not June the 6th, that we made that decision.
Right, thank you. I will say also, Mr. Mayor, with respect to the comments, that the moratorium will end, 120 days is the longest time, it could end earlier than that, once there are, if the council does in fact enact modifications, it would end at that time, so there's no, by no means it'd have to be 180 days.
To clarify, you said 120 days, but it's 180.
Right.
But to comment and your point, if we come to some conclusion there, we can, that time could be shorter.
That's right.
Okay, Karen?
If we come to some conclusion on certain types of zonings, do we, is this an all or nothing for all of these, or could we, we could do away with a moratorium for CUP zonings, once we've decided how that's going to be handled, but keep the others, or does it all have to be one at one time?
To the extent that the council, for instance, comes to some agreement perhaps in performance standards that may not incorporate all of what's here, but maybe less than that, we could fashion a resolution to shut down elements of the moratorium and continue on with additional ones, or shut it all down, depending upon how, so there's maximum flexibility.
So, we don't have to, it's not an all or nothing?
That's correct.
As we come to a resolution, we can take care of it.
Okay, Will?
So, I guess further to that point, then, we don't need to include that stipulation that's implied in this ordinance?
It's not implicit within the ordinance, what it is, is to the extent that the council does in fact take action on those subsequent performance standards, you could just give the city manager or my office direction, and we can just lift the moratorium on various portions of the code if we need to.
Okay. Anybody else have anything on that? No, I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 14-033. Second.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Moreg. Any discussion? Hearing known, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, that passes unanimous. Okay, our city manager, please call the next item.
Will. The next item is consideration of a resolution adopting the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Department Youth Sports Concussion Policy, Agenda Item Number 14-034, Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In 2013, the state of Georgia legislature passed a bill mandating that all agencies that provide youth sports have a policy on dealing with concussions, including education and return, safe return to play. What you have before you is the City of Milton's response here, as crafted by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Last month, you may recall, they brought the rental policy to you, and this month concussion policy, and next month we'll have more things coming to you. The Parks and Rec Board has been working very hard on helping to start to look at a more global picture of the things we're doing as we're expanding our Parks and Rec offerings here. So, what we have created is a policy that is very much in line with what the law is calling for, we've also created a parent education verification form, and we also have provided for pocket reminders, with just the details and highlights of how to deal with concussions and safe return to play. And these concussion cards will be distributed to every single participant, both parents and coaches, as well as the participants. And it's a complete policy here, and we're happy to answer any questions we may have on it.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Craig? Matt?
Yes, sir.
I've read it, it's great, I appreciate what the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is doing, having been a coach myself and seeing everything that you guys are doing, I appreciate the steps we're doing on this, I just want to commend you on that. My main question is, obviously, there's some sports that are involving more collision opportunities than others.
Yes.
Are all coaches in all sports are going to be given this opportunity for concussions because you never know when an accident happens, or is it going to be relegated to just mainly some sports?
We are certainly focusing on all sports where there is a realistic likelihood for collision. Now, we haven't gotten into it with the yoga program, I'm not trying to be funny here, you know, but certain Parks and Rec offerings, you know, the music program, it's not appropriate, but anything where there is a likelihood for collision, lacrosse, soccer, you know, one day we'll have football, the baseball program, Hope or Youth Association. So, anything where there's a collision, we are mandating the requirement of education of the coaches and the parental waiver. And I don't know if you saw in your packet, but the small education card, we actually had money donated to get that created, from an Eagle Scout, so that came out very well.
Okay. Bill, did you have a question?
Maybe just a clarification, I noticed you had a waiver form in there, apparently all of the parents of participants have to sign that waiver, is that correct?
Every, parent of every participant must sign the waiver, yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else?
I guess one more question on that, a lot of kids play the same sport multiple seasons, they sign, the parents sign that waiver every single year, or do we just keep it on file for one season?
It's good for a year.
One for a year, all right.
For a year.
Okay. There's no more questions, so thank you, Mr. Craig, and open that up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Department Youth Sports Concussion Policy, Agenda Item Number 14-034.
Second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Coontz, second by Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much, the Parks and Rec Board will be back with more next month.
All right, if our city manager, please read the next item.
Next item is consideration and possible approval of land acquisition contract for a plus or minus 2.1404 acre parcel of property in the Crab Apple community of Milton. The proposed acquisition involves an assemblage of parcels located between Crab Apple Circle to the north and Crab Apple Road to the south, and is otherwise identified as portions of Fulton County tax parcels 22400111350092, 22400111350258, 22400111350126, 22400111350118, and 22011350266. The acquisition price is $900,000, the seller is S.H.F. Crab Apple LLC, so Agenda Item Number 14-035. Mayor, members of the council, this is the first of two potential land acquisition contracts being brought forward tonight, this is the first time that they have been out of executive session and into the public forum. This is a location in Crab Apple, to give you some ideas, its geography would be immediately behind, with some distance separation, but behind and across the street from the buildings that are built today that front Crab Apple Road, that have the twisted thread and assortment of key establishments in them. And this is an assemblage of two owners' lands that span multiple tax parcels, the desire the council has always been to find a place to put City Hall in Crab Apple. It is fair to say that this would make an excellent location, it is right in the middle of things, we've seen some plans, and the council's direct and staff to move forward to bring these parcels under contract. That's what this does tonight, we do not, we would actually be making this offer based upon the contract, it's a bit different than what we usually do, where I bring you a contract, and as soon as you say aye, it's done. This is the council's approval to issue the contract to the seller, in hopes that it would be executed, but this is, this will be our offer for the purchase of this property. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, to answer them, and, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Any questions for our city manager? Bill?
Chris, I assume by this time would determine that we have clear title?
It's been, I could turn it over to the city attorney, this one's been a labor of love, it's a little bit, been more difficult to figure all that out than the normal raw piece of land, but I'm comfortable to say that we, at closing, would have free and marketable title, yes.
That's correct, the contract only requires that we've done title work and have a title opinion for good title on it. The challenge with this one has been some of the, some of the stormwater issues, we have those in hand as well.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Before somebody speaks up, and if they choose to make a motion to approve this tonight, if you would just add as a part of your motion to direct me and give me the authority to sign documents that can close this property with these conditions, the closing attorney will like to see that that was made a part of the record, if I'm the one that shows up to actually sign the papers.
Okay, no comments, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the land acquisition contract for plus or minus 2.1404 acre parcel of property in the Crab Apple community of Milton, Agenda Item Number 14-035, and approve the city manager executing that contract.
Second the motion.
If I could just correct, city manager to approve or to sign all documents needed at closing.
City manager to approve, to sign all documents needed at closing.
Thank you.
Second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Thurman, and a second by Councilmember Lusk. I'd just like to make a comment, one of the sellers actually shares an office building or is next door to me in our, in my regular job, but just, you know, for the record, we've never discussed or had any conversations about that, that's all been handled through the right process with staff and the seller, so just to clarify that, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there's no concern there.
All right, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. If the city manager, please call the next item.
Absolutely, the next one is council consideration and possible approval of a land acquisition contract for a plus or minus .3277 acre parcel of property in the Crab Apple community of Milton. The proposed acquisition involves a parcel located between Crab Apple Circle to the north and Crab Apple Road to the south, otherwise identified as a portion of Fulton County Tax Parcel 22400111350217. The acquisition price is $46,000, the seller is J.W. Homes LLC, Agenda Item 14-036. Mayor and council, with the same presentation from the prior item, this is the other .3 acres that's needed to make the entirety of the parcel that we want to acquire, this one just was owned by John Villanueva Homes, so we have a different seller. Again, this contract, like the other, is our proposal to them, our proposed purchase to them, if you approve tonight, I will deliver the contract to John Villanueva Homes tomorrow. On both of these, though, I mean, it's not as though we're going blind into this, we've had discussions and have agreed to, agreed upon prices prior to, so this is just more the formality of delivering the documents, so I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay, any questions on this parcel?
You can do the same motion with regards to your having authority to sign.
Authority to sign documents at closing.
Okay, I'll look for a motion, Matt?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 14-036, with the approval for the city manager to sign documents as needed.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Coontz, and seconded by Councilmember Moreg. Any discussion?
I just think it's a great commitment on the city's part to declare where we're going to be putting the city hall, and I'm excited that this is an opportunity for us to show that we want to have that area really grow, and I'm excited for it, so I'm glad to make this one.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. As we move into reports and comments, I want to take that one step further, what Councilmember Coontz said, this is exciting, it should be for our citizens to, as we grow and we build a place to gather and a sense of community, it was pretty unanimous that we felt the Crab Apple area would be the best place to build our history, if you want to call it, and have a place for community to gather, to have our city hall, have a park, again, somewhere to kind of draw our community and have something that's our own. The other thing I want to, you know, make sure for the record everyone realizes, we are going about this in a fiscally responsible way, that by purchasing this property, and eventually, it'll be a long process, but by eventually building a building, it will, in the long run, be a cost savings to the city, i.e., we're paying a lot of, you know, we're paying rent now, so the same, we'll swap paying the rent for debt payments, which ultimately will be paid for and the city will own it, so it's going to serve several things, it's going to be a great city hall for our city staff and for our citizens to work together, and also a draw, we hope to be a drawing place for our community, and also, long-term, it's going to be a smarter fiscal decision for our city, so thanks everybody for the help. Bill?
Just one final comment on that, by purchase of this property and locating city hall down there, we have an opportunity to reconfigure the roadway system there, provide a real bypass around the five points of Crab Apple. This is one of the first steps in making that whole thing happen, I think by purchase of that property, it allows us to help ease the traffic situation downtown Crab Apple.
Okay, and you know, the only other thing I want to add is to thank the, thank the sellers for working with us, you know, things have changed a lot in the last five years, and, you know, a few years ago, people were doing anything they could to try to get rid of land, but things have changed in areas of Milton, as most people know, so, you know, our sellers had lots of options they could do with that property, so I believe they, I think we all believe they worked with us to give us a fair deal on that, so. Anything else council would like to comment on?
I do have one, I meant to do this last time, but as Chris had mentioned a while back, that we need to look at the forms and permits section of our website, I know Christine had worked very hard on looking at all of that aspect, and I went in there and too, and not someone being a builder or a developer, but I understood exactly what needed to be done on it, so I just wanted to commend the staff here at the council meeting, great job on putting together some things for us, people do business with the City of Milton, I think it made a lot more sense, and we're probably not done all the way, but definitely heading in a good direction, and I just want to commend you on that. And if other council members haven't had a chance to look at it, probably a good idea and add input.
Okay. Move it to staff. Move it to staff, do our staff have any reports?
We do, we've got a couple of things tonight, good news, things tonight, but housekeeping stuff out of the way first. If you have your campaign disclosure report, and you can do the short form now this year that Sudi left for you, I'm taking those tonight. If you have yours done, just pitch it to me before the end of the night, and I'll make sure the clerk gets it when she's back from her training. I want to tell you that, appreciate many of you attended the fire banquet last night, I think that, or the night before, that pulled off really well. Fire Department's glad to see how many of you there, and it was a good, good night for them. Thank you all for this proclamation tonight, I really had no idea. And it just goes, I told Stacy, I said I might have to open record to post our emails now every week. Because that's the best kept secret in the history of Milton. A good news, and to follow up on your discussion about the City Hall project, today, we, for the first time ever, and it's ironic that this happens on the same day that we closed this property, but today we were able to capture the first revenue numbers based upon the new loss distribution, because it tracks one month in arrears. So we saw December's numbers today. And you always sit in that moment where you say, okay, are we going to be able to do these capital projects or not? Did that really happen, or did it really not? And the number that we saw today was in line with what we were anticipating. It was roughly 90% higher than the same time last year, which is about what we predicted. So that's good, that's going to put these capital projects that you'll want to do on track, it's going to put them on track with the, with the numbers that we've presented to you. I can say with some certainty now that that's the real distribution, because we saw it with our own two eyes this morning. Having said, having said that, to give you some ideas, obviously, people are going to want to know what's, what's this whole City Hall thing going to be. We will likely publish an agenda item for next Monday night's work session to bring some concepts and thoughts and start to have that discussion. We have to, the other question is going to be, when are you going to move in? You know, our target date is, our rent ends here in April of 2017. So if we don't have us in that building by April 2017, we will be homeless and I will likely be unemployed. Neither of those are good things. So that's the date we're working towards, is April of 2017. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And as per motion, a second on our agenda, we added a executive session to discuss personnel. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'm going to move to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel issues.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Coontz, to move into executive session to discuss personnel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We'll be.
Very, yeah, very, very clear.